And call this meeting in order. Welcome to Midwest City Council Meeting for March 27th, If you have not, if you have an item that you wish to discuss with council, please sign up on the signup sheets. Also, be cognizant of the fact that if it comes under new business, public discussion, we cannot engage with you on a, in a discussion over the issue, but we can also direct staff to make it an agenda item for the next council meeting. With that being said, Mr. Sullivan, could you come down and lead us into invocation? Rick Dawkins will be leading us in the pledge. Please stand.
Ask you to bow with me, please. Almighty God, we come before your throne with humble hearts tonight, Lord. We thank you for this most holy week of the year. Father, we thank you so much for you and the gift of your son, Jesus. Father, we, we give you glory and honor and thanks for that, for that sacrifice and that gift. Father, we thank you for these men and women tonight, and we ask that you be with them through their decisions tonight. Father, give them peace about their decisions and wisdom that only you can provide. Father, we know that there are many who are sacrificing tonight to guarantee the freedoms of this great nation, this state and this city. And Father, we ask you to be upon, be with them and give them peace and comfort and protection. Father, we thank you so much, once again, for the occasion of this evening, the celebration and the decisions that we have before us. Thank you for Jesus and the blood that was shed, but ultimately, Lord, we thank you for your son's resurrection from death. We ask all of this in his name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. We do have some community-related announcements. Starting April 19th, we will be starting our 41st Citizens Police Academy. If you're interested in attending that, you get the inside look at the police department from top to bottom. It's a very interesting program and I suggest anybody that's interested to attend. You can contact Lieutenant Ron Strucker at the police department or download the application on our website. Ms. Eads?
One announcement to share. If anyone is interested, the Dell City chapter of the Rainbow Girls, it's a division under the Masonic Lodge, is doing a fundraiser. The money will be used to help the girls with their expenses throughout the year. They are doing a quote-unquote "Egg My House" where they will deliver candy-filled eggs and hide them in your front yard. It's forty dollars, excuse me, it's forty eggs for twenty dollars, sixty eggs for thirty dollars, all the way down to a hundred eggs for fifty dollars. There's a contact person for that. If anyone's interested, just let me know, or you can see my Facebook page, Susan Eads for Ward One Midwest City Council, and the posting's on there. It's a really worthy cause, and you don't have to stuff those eggs yourself for the kids or grandkids, so, thank you.
Any other community-related announcements? Mr. Stroh, don't we have a bunch of Easter egg hunts somewhere in the city this weekend?
Oh, we did there last weekend, but we have Omni and Hulk.
Thank you. All right, we do have several proclamations to do tonight, so bear with us. Ladies and gentlemen, several weeks ago, we lost one of our firefighters. Totally unexpected picture of health, but for whatever reason, God called him home. He was a friend of mine and a friend of all these gentlemen here and a friend to a lot of us on the horseshoe. He was the ultimate professional and was 100% dedicated to youth and protecting your families. We're doing a small token to appreciate him tonight. His family was going to be here this evening, but obviously, they're dealing with the, and overcome with the grief, and they're just trying to catch up. A lot of things have been happening over the last several weeks, and we respect that. So, we decided we'd go ahead and do this proclamation, and Chief, you guys will be delivering this to his family after we're done. With that being said, whereas Chief, Assistant Chief Reese Morrison began his career with the Midwest City Police Fire Department in 1996 as a firefighter, but his commitment to his job and fellow firefighters propelled his promotions to apparatus operator in 2002, company officer in 2005, ride out in 2007, and finally Assistant Chief in 2012. Reese was instrumental in the success of the Midwest City Fire Department's hazmat crew, leading them to several prestigious first-place awards during training and competitions, as well as personally tested new Level-A suits for the service and obtaining computer, a computer system for the team. Whereas, his resourcefulness was seen many, many times, as he led his crew in fixing leaks in the roof of Station One, remodeling the downstairs office in Station Two, and providing some materials himself, among other things. And whereas his excellent, as a kind-hearted, led-by-exemple type of man, became first evident in his personal life with his wife, Shelley, of 27 years, and his children, Shelley and Shay. Whereas Reese was always looking for ways to serve others and led his team to serve as well. For example, during, during the summer of 2009, he led, he drove to Edmund to pick up an air handling unit and successfully installed it for the 18 patients and workers at Midwest City Specialty Hospital. So, therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City. You hereby proclaim March 27th, 2018, as Reese Morrison Day in the city of Midwest City, and I urge all citizens to express a kind, appreciative thought to Reese's family and fellow firefighters. How many of you grew up in the 60s? Well, you'll, you'll, you'll be familiar with this. Whereas, from the founding of our nation to the present day, the United States has fought many against tyranny and pursued liberty via the brave men and women of the United States Military, who have answered the call of our nation to serve overseas and at home, making our country a safer place because of their dedication. And whereas the freedoms, liberties that we are blessed to enjoy are a direct result of the courage, devotion, and sacrifice of members of our armed forces, we are grateful for their brave service and draw inspiration and pride from them all. Whereas, in 2017, President Donald Trump declared March 29th as the date each year for the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, as it was on this date, March 29th, 1973, when the United States Combat and Combat Support Units withdrew from South Vietnam. And whereas nearly 3 million men and women served on the ground and in the air, on the rivers, in, at sea, with Vietnam, within the Vietnam Borders during the conflict, Midwest City wishes to specifically show honor to the men and women who survived and remember the 58,000-plus men and women who gave their lives during the Vietnam War. Whereas, through long and controversial nature, this war in many ways defined an entire generation of Americans and the lives of men and women who served during that conflict. Whereas, Vietnam Veterans Day affords us the opportunity to recall with pride and gratitude the selfless military service, patriotism, battle courage, and personal sacrifice of these servicemen and women who answered their nation's call to duty. And so, therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City. You hereby proclaim March 29th, 2018, as Vietnam Veterans Day. And ladies and gentlemen, I would ask for you to stand and give these gentlemen the welcome home that they deserve. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Rick Dawkins. He's been serving Ward Three Councilman the last eight years, and he's bailing on us. He's had enough. But I've known Rick for better part of 25 years. He was a principal in Mid-Dell School System, where I met him, and we've interacted ever since in a number of different capacities. But he has made the decision to go on and actually enjoy his life for a while. So, with that being said, and Rick, I do consider you a dear friend. So, I'm gonna try to get through this. Whereas Rick Dawkins began serving the city of Midwest City in 1995 as a tree board member, and on May 17th, 2010, was elected to City Council as Ward Three Council Member, serving until April 9th, 2018. Whereas, he dedicated his time and big heart in service to the community of Midwest City by serving on tree board, planning commission, helped execute the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, Subdivision Regulation and Zoning Ordinance, we just got through discussing that, Update Task Force Committees, Original Square Mile, Reinvestment Committee, Retirees Health Insurance Committee, and Sidewalk Committee. Whereas, as a council member, he brings a calm, pragmatic approach to, to issues brought before the council. His leadership will be greatly missed. And whereas Rick brought new and innovative ideas to the horseshoe as a result of his travel experiences, he brings a smile, and I mean a smile to everyone's face, even in tumultuous, I think I said that right, times, like May 2005. Whereas, he is appreciated for his common sense approach to council votes, which has come from years with dealing with teachers, crazy parents, and young students. Whereas, Rick served as a voice of reason on the council with good leadership skills that will often would be helpful as council worked through, as worked to resolve difficult issues. Whereas, he's always warmly, he always warmly welcomes people and is cheerful. Therefore, I'm Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City. Duke hereby proclaim March 28th, 2018, as Rick Dawkins Day. Ladies and gentlemen, again, please stand and congratulate him, not only on his surface, but... No, we gotta, we gotta do the... You wanna say something? You gotta say something.
I think it's, being, is this on?
I think so.
Being on the council, it's, it's been an opportunity for me to be able to try to, in a small way, give back a little bit what this city has given to me. We, I can remember, eight years ago, when we first gone on, we're saying, gosh, we gotta get a new, a new sewer plant, a new, a $50 million, and, and the voters approved it. We now have a state-of-the-art sewer plant. I, I remember getting the basketball courts over here at the park, remodeling the swimming pool, so many things that have happened. Eight years ago, that we're going, will we ever be able to get a movie theater in Midwest City? And, and we're, we're breaking ground to having the most state-of-the-art movie theater in the state of Oklahoma that's gonna be open and pretty soon. So, being a council, I learned, Barry Switzer used to always say, "Coaches get way too much credit when teams win, and coaches take way too much grief when teams lose. It's your players that make you what you are." And the city staff that we have here is incredible. They are second to none. I would, our police department, our fire department, our streets, our sewer department, I, I, I would put 'em against any staff in the entire nation. And, and you should feel good about the staff that you have. Everywhere from Guy Henson, City Manager, to every employee that we have. I, I love this place, and no matter what I ever do, I could never give back to this city as much as this city's given to me. So, it's been an honor for me to be able to serve for eight years, and I appreciate you guys and all you guys on the council, and the people that were before me. I think about that, that it's, it's a, it's a small club that's on this council. You know, not a lot of people do it, and there's a lot of hours, and it's not as glamorous as what, you know, as what I thought it was gonna be once. But I've learned a lot. I respect everybody that's ever sat up there because it's not as easy as what it looks like. It's really not. But I thank you guys and thank the city of Midwest City. That's best place on earth.
Rick usually is our motion maker, so we're gonna have to figure out who's gonna take his place once he gets, once he leaves. So, with that being said, we do, will enter into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council can, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience who wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Rick?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next item?
First discussion item is PC 1939, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of Approval of a Resolution for a Special Use Permit to Allow the Use of Eating Establishment Sit-down Alcoholic Beverage, Beverages, and Low Point Beer permitted in the C-3 Community Commercial District for the property described as a part of the southwest quarter of Section 10, Township 11 North, Range 2 West, located at 2320 South Air Depot Boulevard. Mr. Harless?
Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions if the council has any.
I was planning on letting Motion Man Dawkins make all of the motions tonight.
Oh, gosh.
However, I know the gentlemen who own this group that are coming forward, and they are going to be a great asset to this community, and I'm very excited to have them. And they're also friends of mine, so I'm a little bit biased, but I make a motion to approve.
Second. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have anything to discuss on this particular item? Hearing none, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC 1940, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of Approval of the Replat of Lot 23, Block 8 of the Point City Edition, described as a part of the northwest quarter of Section 6, Township 11 North, Range 1 West, and addressed as 10374 Bellevue Drive. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is just simply a replat to divide the lot into two lots, so that the additional lot could be built upon, meets all minimum requirements as far as utilities and plating requirements. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval.
This is a public discussion. Anyone have anything to do with this particular discussion item? Hearing none, Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC 1941, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of the Bags Inc. Final Plat for the property described as a part of the northwest quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 2 West, and as shown on the attached maps. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is the final plat, and if you may remember, a few months ago, when this came through on the preliminary plat, there was some questions about whether it could be served with sewer, and the part of the requirement was to get with the railroad to see that if it could be bored under the railroad in order to get sewer there. The railroad would not permit them to do that, so seeing how they meet all the requirements of the final plat, staff and planning commission recommend approval. Glad to answer any questions.
This is a public discussion. Anyone have anything to bring forth to council on a particular item?
Billy, how was that gonna be served, I guess, sewer-wise?
Just off of, off of the septic systems there.
And where is that located at?
It's off of Sooner, just south of 23rd Street.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
This is Discussion Consideration of Issues and Conditions Concerning the Turtlewood East Detention Pond. At the last council meeting, there were representatives from the Homeowners' Association that wanted to address the city council on some issues involving the detention facility on the east side of the Turtlewood addition. It was not possible for us to discuss that, as it was heard under new business, and so we did do a, an agenda item and prepared some additional information in support of that agenda item. There were a number of various city staff members that went out to the detention area and the, and the surrounding areas to, to see if there were any violations that needed to be addressed. Our, our representatives from our Stormwater Quality Division visited the site and saw no visible code violations. Our Neighborhood Services Director, which represents code enforcement, visited the site. There were some brush piles in the west Turtlewood area that needed to be taken care of, and appropriate notices and orders were given for those. Our community, excuse me, our Community Development Department also visited the site and provided some additional information regarding the retaining walls that were built in the, near the, on the east side of the detention pond, and that there obviously are some issues with those, those retaining walls that will have to be addressed in the future. They are located on the Homeowners' Association property, so they will become the responsibility of the Homeowners' Association when it is fully conveyed over to the, to the association. The detention ponds themselves appeared to be working and, and doing what they were supposed to be doing. There was some scouring and erosion along some of the side slopes, and we, we have evidence provided to us by the, the developer as of this afternoon, that many of those scour and erosion areas have been addressed, and, and some type of a fabric material has been placed along much of those side slopes in order to preserve the, the slope and, and prevent the erosion and scouring. So, we do believe that we, it would be appropriate for us to look into making some additional changes to our, how we, how we deal with the development of detention facilities at the, at the beginning, and then also at the, at the point in time when they're to be conveyed to the Homeowners' Association, so that, that the Homeowners' Association is not left with a, a, a situation that they shouldn't have. That will require some subsequent ordinance changes and so forth, and, and we're prepared to begin to work on those. And as I said, we did meet with the neighbor, with the, with the developer this afternoon. We understand that they have initiated some, some conversations and some meeting with the Homeowners' Association, and we believe that they will also have some subsequent meetings with the Homeowners' Association to address many of the issues that, that have been brought forward. So, that, that's our report. I know we have some, some property owners in the neighborhood that will want to speak to the council as well.
Mark, you want to approach the podium? How many of you are from Turtlewood? Raise your hand. Okay.
Do you have any Home Creations representatives?
The developer is represented here. Could you raise your hand? Go ahead, Mark.
I'm Mark Casson, 2342 Shell Drive, in the middle of the Turtlewood development. All of this kinda started, oh, thank you, council, for your attention to this, giving us the time here to, to speak to this, and helping perhaps put some pressure that we asked for on, on the developer. That in itself is very helpful, just if nothing else comes from this, if you will. But to tell you the truth, what happened was that Home Creations actually dropped the ball. That pond, I guess, and I don't really know how it works within the Home Creations Company, but apparently they have a land construction group, and then they have the HOA guy or whatever. And some reason, there was a period of time in 2016, 17, where the land construction company said, "Not our pond," and the HOA guy said, "I don't know that there's a pond there that I'm supposed to be taking care of," and so it went into disrepair. And it caused all these problems with that pond. Perhaps, if they had been taking care of it all along, maintaining it as the developer, we wouldn't be here right now. But, so clearly, the fault lies with the developer in not maintaining that pond over the period, over this period of time. They also claimed that they didn't know of any of these problems, but we, for the last two years, homeowners have been emailing the HOA declarant that there are problems. There's erosion, there's trash, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's, they have left an impression that they didn't So it's, they have left an impression that they didn't know about this problem until just recently. But we've been emailing them, not me personally because I haven't lived to see, but there are those that have. And that, just recently, Home Creations having become aware of these problems, decided to try to quickly turn over the HOA to the homeowners without first curing these issues that they obviously were fault of. And now with the publicity problem, the publicity, the bad publicity, we were on news four with our problem over a couple days ago, and that with the council being aware of our problem, all of a sudden, we had to have a quick meeting. And, you know, we had a Thursday meeting, we had one rep at that who happens to also be a homeowner. So that's why, you know, he was there, was able to speak for Home Creations on our Thursday meeting. Oh, we got to have a quick meeting on Friday, the next day. And so we were able to pull some homeowners together and have a quick forced meeting with them. At the Thursday meeting, we had developed a list of 20 demands. We had gotten with our HOA attorney earlier in the week, and we were like, okay, before we go sue, let's at least tell Home Creations what we want. And so we told them, these 20 items is what we want. So we applied it to them. We were promised at that meeting, at the Friday meeting, a quick resolution, and that we would be happy with the response. Well, they were lots of good words. We're waiting for the actions now. Taking care of the erosion with the fabric is only one piece of the 20 different items we had on the list. So excuse me for being a little skeptical, but Home Creations doesn't necessarily have a track record of performance with the homeowners as what got us here to begin with, with all these problems, and saying that we don't have any problems even though we've been emailing them for the past two years on problems. So actions speak louder than words. We'll see over time here. You may want to come back to the council. We'll see. They have promised, again, lots of promises. They've promised to meet with us, tell us what they're going to do for the 20 different items we had on the list. We did have a few items on the list that we have determined that perhaps are the city's responsibilities, such as streets, stop signs, lights. So I want to make it clear that yes, yea verily, in this meeting, that streets are the responsibility of the city, and maybe because you may have a bond with the original, the company that built the streets, you may be able to go back to them for some work, but I just want to make it clear, is that a true statement? Is the city's responsibility for the streets?
Yes, sir. And on issues like stop signs, we have a process to evaluate stop sign locations and policies as to where they should and shouldn't be. Mr. Manife can guide you through that process, as well as if there are some issues involving streetlights. I don't know, do you have streetlights in the neighborhood? I would assume that you do.
Yes.
And are they out?
Yes.
Then you can refer those. We have a location on our website where you can refer locations where streetlights are out, and that will go to our public works administration, and they will then be turned over to OGN E for repair.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay. There's still an issue with the HOA itself, and how many of HOAs there are. At our meeting on Friday with the Home Creations, they implied there might be two. Is it, it is up to the, I want to make it clear, it's up to developer to determine how many HOAs are in a neighborhood? That's a question, if you guys know the answer. Yes?
Yes.
And so it's up to them to determine what factors go into determining why they would want to make multiple HOAs or one community development as far as HOA?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Maybe we'll have a say in that at our meetings with Home Creations. And right now, there's no ordinances or anything that govern how many homes or how many, you know, site location or anything for an HOA within the city of Midwest City?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. There's something to consider in the future, or something to help homeowners, the citizens from both a financial standpoint, mainly it's the financial, because if you only have if you have expenses, you know, of an expensive pond that requires something, you know, then you may not be able, if you have only 50 homes in there, you may not be able to afford to do, if you have a lot of common areas, for instance, afford obviously maintenance with that few of homes. I think we're at about 180 strong right now, but that may include, I heard it might be plat one through four that might be an HOA for Turtlewood. That I think is closer to 160, it might be 160 homes. And then five, six, seven, I don't know where eight would show up in that, because if it eights on top of the hill, it'd be separated, maybe it would be a third HOA or something like that. With no common areas or potential, but within Turtlewood, they're all probably going to use the same common areas, you know? When you walk through a neighborhood, you walk, you know, to wherever the walking trails are in that neighborhood. So I'm not sure I'm clear on why there would not be only one HOA for Turtlewood community, but we'll discuss that with Home Creations. Any questions for me?
No, and just like we discussed upstairs, and thank you for being here this evening. We had a two-hour, what we felt like a productive meeting with the developers this afternoon. A lot of the issues that you brought forward to us were being addressed. Again, it depends on the follow-through. We'll be watching their progress. I drove out there this afternoon, and everything they told us upstairs appeared to have been done, and they're continuing to work through the issues. As far as the HOAs, we, dividing them up into three lessens the cost factor on each HOA and the responsibilities. That seems to make sense to me. The less that you're responsible for, the less it's going to cost you as far as your HOA goes. But again, those are conversations that you guys are going to have to have with the developer. It was his, or their thought was that they were going to split them up into at least three different homeowners associations, which does make sense. And then the other issues, we'll be looking at the streets and seeing what we can do to mitigate those issues and work through it.
Can I ask you a question? Just because I'm thinking of economy of scale, and the more people you have sign up for insurance, cheaper your insurance is, wouldn't the more people in a homeowner association actually lower their costs?
That's what I was thinking.
Well, in this particular instance, the thought process was that they've got two rather large detention ponds that they're going to have to maintain. And if one becomes an issue and drains the money out of one, or the whole, then there's going to be less money to take care of the whole, if that makes sense.
I'm sorry, it's kind of like, Sean, if you think of it in terms of the nutshell game, which one's got a ball under it at what time, type of thing? Which section has got a problem at one time? So, you know, yeah, if they're spread out into sections, you don't necessarily have as many members to share that cost as you would if you had one global HOA, but at the same time, those members are bearing a cost for one item, it's spread out over time as to another item, et cetera, instead of there being a continuous that everybody's contributing to.
And plus too, although one through four is almost complete, and they're collecting dues currently, or fees, the other two are not, so.
Well, there's fees being collected for five also.
You know.
For five.
Okay, but the other issue, sorry, but, you know, I think everybody up here on the horseshoe is sensitive to the plight that you all have and what you're dealing with, and that's why we asked at the last meeting for city staff to go out and address these needs right away, and that's happened. There's a certain portion of this, with all due respect, that I think is not really appropriate for the city to deal with. You may have an issue with regard to civil aspect with regard to your developer, or with regard to the homeowners association, since it's somewhere in limbo between the developer transferring it to the homeowners association. But what is certainly before us is issues as has been addressed, the streets, the street lights. You know, again, there's a process for stop signs, there's a petition process and analysis of what the traffic is, et cetera. Patrick's the expert on that. So, I mean, those are all things that are definitely before us. And so with all due respect, I mean, you know, it would be my request, and I know we have an officially closed discussion, but it would be my request that we take no action on this item because there really isn't anything to vote on, and that we continue it for a period of 60 days to sort of get a status of what's happened, or, you know, get a following. And again, the things that are key that we're following on are the issues that truly are before the city. And so we have had a repeated issue going on since last fall with regard to streetlights. So personally, I have a lot of interest in finding out why you all have streetlight problems out there, and what's being done to rectify that situation. Same thing with your streets, you know, stop signs, et cetera, that is before us. So, you know, a lot of the details that you want to bring up and that we've had somewhat of discussion about, it's really not our place to call the ball on that in reality. And I would defer to legal counsel on that one.
But I want to make another statement too, and they've only made reference from here and down there of one meeting that occurred, and that was earlier today. There's been more meetings that have gone on that our city attorney has been involved in with the attorney from, so there has been more meetings than just the one that you make reference to today. Our city attorney has been involved in it a lot over the last two weeks.
And I will say, us wanting to put this off for 60 days is not kicking the can down the road. Kicking the can down the road would just be voting to accept this tonight and go on down. Us doing this means that we're interested, we want to just see what's going on over the short and the long term.
And in the meeting, they're the ones that asked for, they're the ones that asked for a meeting with the mayor and the city man.
Find out exactly what needs to be done, and they said they, at least David Boxer, attorney, said that they want to resolve those issues as many as they can.
Why didn't they invite a homeowner to that representing the neighborhood?
What meeting?
Weren't you talking about the Turtlewood development and the HOA?
I have no idea. I'm just talking about them meeting with me and talking to me, and they want a meeting with the mayor and them to at least flush out what they considered issues that the city were involved in, and then other issues being brought up by the homeowners. And all those were discussed, and they're the ones that voluntarily came to the meeting and answered everybody's questions in depth, and then they're the ones who brought up things that they wanted to try to do to resolve it. And so I think the council wants to look at the extra time, is do they do what they told us that they were going to do with you, and give them time to see if they meet some of yours. Now, I understand in that discussion, there was a big list that they were given, and I don't think that big list is going to involve city involvement. That may be things, like I told you last time, if you have a dispute with the developer and you think that they should be resolving certain things, and that's what attorneys are for. You get your own attorney, and you said you've got attorney, and he's recommended you to make this list, and that's fine. I don't know how involved the council can get with that, being that your addition, like I said, has already been plotted, it's been, the city doesn't have really any controls in. The only controls we have is what they've given us, and they have volunteered and come forward on all the stuff with the city, including their attorney. I've had several conversations with him, and then we had this meeting. So what I would say is, you're right, action speaks louder than words. Now let's give it some time and see if they do what the city was going to do.
I agree with you.
Okay.
If it does come up as a agenda item in 60 days, once it's on the agenda, public comment is allowed for it. It'll come up as an issue, a discussion item, issue, and public comment is allowed there. So.
We do have another gentleman that was signed up to talk. Mark, you want to?
And so you say you have an attorney? Do you have an attorney?
We have been talking to an attorney, yes.
Okay.
Would Larry Paskoff come forward?
Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Paskoff, could you just state your name and address for us, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Larry Paskoff. I'm in the Turtlewood addition as well, 10513 Southeast 25th Street. First off, thank you for allowing me to come up here, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to step back a minute, just so, again, we're obviously dealing with retention pond issue. As far as Home Creations, six years ago, I purchased a Home Creations home in your competitor city, Yukon, Oklahoma, and I actually had an erosion issue, which I found ironic considering what I'm dealing with now. I moved in here in June. I went to Home Creations, explained the problem. They came out, threw some dirt on it, literally, and within a few months, it eroded again. They threw more dirt, it eroded again. They started to put a little bit of French drain in, but that has never fixed the problem at all. In the past six years, I still own the home, I live out here now, but rent that one out. I've spent probably about $3,000 or $4,000, my own money. Home Creations was never willing to fix their mistake of erosion, the way they graded the land, the way they set up the housing. I'm not going to show it to you, it's not really important that in. My point of the story is, I came here to Midwest City, purchased a home with the Turtlewood addition and Home Creations, and once again, I'm at a fear that I'm going to be out another $4,000 in erosion issues. Again, this is an HOA issue, I don't know what the city involvement is, obviously you're having meetings with them. I'm not going to slander, I'm not going to libel Home Creations, but having been through this before for several years, I'm well aware of their ways of, methods of dealing with this. I'm going to ask what you take with, take what they say, take with a grain of salt. They're throwing dirt on some eroded dirt, just letting it re-erode is not going to fix the problem. There's a long-term fix to this. I do feel it is their responsibility as well. I purchased a home in good faith that I wouldn't be spending $3,000 or $4,000, nine, 10 months down the road, having to fix, you know, a retention pond issue. If they're coming to you saying they're fixing things, I'd be careful what they're saying, please. Please also keep in mind that these developers, there's other developers in the area that probably want to build in Midwest City. Keep their names in mind as opposed to Home Creations when it comes time for bidding on those pieces of property. I just wanted to give my opinion, let you know what I've experienced in the past with them, and what it looks like I'm going to have to experience again with them, another $3,000 or $4,000 if this isn't fixed.
And how long have you lived?
I just moved here in June. I'm brand new to the city. It's a beautiful city, by the way. Thank you very much for having me here. When I took a job out of Tinker, I was at the FAA at the airport, lived in Yukon area, moved to Tinker, and bought a house here in Midwest City. It's a beautiful city, but here I am once again dealing with the Home Creations issue. So please keep in mind when they meet with you and say they're fixing things, keep that fact in mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir. Go ahead and approach the podium, please.
How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Hi, my name's Dustin Hart. I live in the Turtlewood addition, 10505 Southeast 25th Street. This evening, I've heard that y'all have been meeting with the developer, Home Creations, and you're discussing the HOA issues. The question that I have is, how as a homeowner do we get a representative to these meetings?
Well, we'll make sure if we have another one on that scale, that you'll get a representative there, if not several. Now, there is, Mark, I explained, I talked to you about this, there's supposed to be another community meeting with your group here in the next several weeks. They've asked me to be in there, be there as well. So the next meeting they have, myself and Councilman Moore will probably be there as representatives of the city, and if we have any further large-scale meetings with the developer, we'll make sure that you have a representative there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You bet. Any further discussion?
Mayor, council, if you all are looking towards a 60-day re-review, I would suggest continuing it to May 22nd. That would be almost 60 days from now.
Chair would go ahead and entertain a motion.
At this time, I would restate my motion that we continue this matter for status follow-up in sixty days, which would be again, the May twenty-second.
Well, it's not quite sixty days, but it's close.
Okay, I apologize, to the May twenty-second council meeting.
Yep.
Do you have a motion, or do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening, and again, we're watching this, and we'll intervene where the city can.
Could I say something, just really quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
This may be out of order, but just in response to your question also, in fairness, when an attorney for Home Creations requests a meeting with the city attorney, that's at their request, so they don't have to include representatives, representative homeowners? That's just a meeting and discussion point? And then, you know, if they choose to include the mayor, that's a direction that they're taking. They seem to be having a subsequent meeting with you all. Again, if that's a problem that you all have, you're welcome to address the issue sooner. We've continued it for effectually sixty days, but if there's a problem, we could address it sooner in one of our meetings in the interim.
It seems like there's a lot of meetings that the homeowners are allowing to attend. So, the mayor says it's large-scale, what's large-scale meeting?
Well, with their team and us. And I will request that a member from your group be present, probably, I'll probably tag Mark, since he's been the lead spokesman.
And to correct that, the only meetings that's occurred is conversations between me and their outside council, which you wouldn't be invited to. And then we had the one meeting this afternoon, I don't know about other meetings, there isn't a bunch of other meetings, there's just one meeting today, is the first meeting we've had.
The other meetings that I've referred to are with Home Creations, and then also the meeting that you had today, that, you know, as a homeowner in the Turtlewood Association, I would like to be privy to that meeting.
And I think we responded to that request.
Yes, sir. But you also identified the city and Home Creations with the plans five and six that , I think flooding on the west side with the two, with the two representatives who were airing their agreements as well. So, they're putting the legal responsibility up to the homeowners and the homeowners association, but then again, want to make sure that we're being privy to the information in the meetings behind both doors.
Okay, we're kind of out of order on this, to further discuss it, but your point's been made, and we'll discuss it. Okay, thank you. We need to move on to the next discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of a request to fund the construction of a waterline extension from Westminster Road to Southeast 28th along Rohan Road and Hand Road in the amount of three hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars, originally presented at the November fourteenth, twenty-seventeenth, and continued to the January twenty-third, twenty-eighteen meeting. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. Per the request of the council, we had two meetings with the neighborhood out there, one of them on February twentieth, and one of them on March sixth, to sit down, kind of a one-on-one meeting, very informal, to talk about who would be committed to tie on to a waterline, should the city go out and install one, to see if there was much interest, and that we would gauge that interest and bring those findings back to the council and present those to you, to you. We discussed who would be responsible for putting in the waterline, maintaining the waterline, and also tying on to the waterline, meaning that the cost of the long tie-on versus the short tie-on, and how that, who pays those fees to get the private waterline from the water meter all the way up to the house? And then the neighborhood seemed to understand that that was a, that that would be a expense borne by them to tie on to the waterline. Some of the comments that were there were that the seventy-five dollar fee seemed fair for the extension of the waterline. But let's just go ahead, there was fifty-eight percent of the people that were involved, for the neighborhood itself, fifty-eight percent would be willing to commit the seventy-five dollar fee to tie on to the waterline. So, out of that, that's twenty out of the thirty-one property owners there. Staff doesn't really have a recommendation on this, one way or the other. We were just bringing that information back to you. We will make a point that any additional waterlines within the city does help in fire protection. And that, we do have one comment in that we noted in the staff report, that should that the, we go ahead with this process to install the waterline, that those people that are committed at this date, the date of the, would be of the council meeting, would be acceptable to staff, staff as far as moving forward in the seven thousand dollar fee to tie on a later date, to have a date firm as far as future development. Because once the, once the waterline is installed, or once we go forward with the waterline, there's no doubt that it'll spur on additional to development. And we see it as a reasonable impact fee to tie on to that waterline at that point in the future date. Glad to answer any questions at this point.
And what about the seventy-five dollars? Where is that?
The seventy-five dollars was a fee that was like a deposit, that was, that the people that committed to the waterline would come in and put down a deposit, and once those deposit, those, the fees, the seventy-five dollar fee was collected from the residents that we would move forward with the project. And obviously, there's many steps in this, the surveying, go out to survey to see where the line can go in, in engineering, and then actually funding the three hundred forty-thousand dollar waterline itself. So, it's a couple-year project more than likely.
Fifty-eight percent of the homeowners out there said that they would pay the seventy-five dollars. I think if we're going to do this, we need to have two lines that are drawn. One is, must have a minimum of fifty percent to pay the seventy-five dollars. And the other is, a timeline in which it must be paid, because we don't need to keep this open-ended, where people can just, I mean, I think strongly that if fifty-eight percent of the people said that they want it, and fifty percent of the people should easily be able to pay that seventy-five dollars in a sixty or ninety-day timeframe. And if they don't, then I don't think we go forward with it.
If it's not fifty percent?
Okay, but my question is, at the present time, we don't have the funding to put this line in, as I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Henson?
That's correct. I mean, we're, you know, two-thirds of the way through this year's budget. We will, we obviously have begun the budget process for next year, and depending on what the council wants to do, we'll evaluate what we can, what we could afford to do in next year. You know, it's not uncommon anymore for us to take small bites of the apple in order to be able to, to be able to eat all the apple. And so, many times, we have to, we have to fund things incrementally each year in order to build up enough money to be able to do the project, so. But as Mr. Harless said, the first step, assuming that, and I certainly appreciate your comments, Councilman Reed, that before we start spending any money, we need a commitment from a certain percentage, and we ought to set a timeframe for those folks to do that.
And my, what I wasn't, let me try my whole sentence again, see if I get my mouth to work. I wasn't saying that if fifty percent in ninety days signed, that we would start. It's all contingent upon the funds that will be available. It might be a year or two, three years down the road. And the other thing that I'd like to mention is, when we do this, the seven thousand dollars for anybody that signs on later, needs to be adjusted, cost of living or CPI, whatever it's called. So fifteen or twenty years from now, if it's really a fifteen thousand dollar charge, those people aren't paying seven thousand.
But I agree with you on that. And one other thing, I think if we're going to prove this, the one date we need to put in there is today on the seven thousand dollars, because, excuse me, somebody goes out and does a lot split tomorrow, they should not get the same deal that these people have got.
I agree.
Because that's going to increase the value of their lot a lot. It's going to go up. So if we agree to this, I think, I don't mind putting off the seventy-five dollar deposit till the funds are available. But the seven thousand dollars stops the minute that we vote on this.
So, the residents, try and make all this clear so we can get Mr. Motion to make a motion.
And let me interrupt. I think we should also give the citizens a chance.
We will, but I'm just, as we're talking through this.
And explain the increase.
Sixty or ninety days, we can decide on how many days timeline. Fifty percent, not fifty percent of the fifty-eight percent, but fifty percent of the homeowners have to have their deposit in. Nobody that has a lot split today or later qualifies for the seventy-five dollars, except those that already have their lots the way they are. And we're going to index the seven thousand dollar fee to CPI going forward every year. Am I, are we, I'm just making sure we're on the same page.
And I would call that a legally created lot, you know, something that the council and the planning commission have already acted upon would be helpful, because we'll get all kinds of things on napkins and everything else, so.
Okay, so legally created lot, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the lot split is, I mean, it's a process that requires going before the planning commission, and I guess we have some that may not require a council action?
Well, as we saw from some earlier things, that, no, they all require action, but there are some lots out there that were created back in, well, nineteen fifty-eight or whatever, or some legally created lots before this date, I think this is final staff.
So let me, are you writing up the motion?
Well, I think before we totally write it out, we need to let the folks speak.
Is there anyone from that particular neighborhood present to address the council? Please come forward and, just listening? That's probably a safe place to do it.
Well, if they don't have anything to say, we must be doing something right.
I don't blame you. Can I come out there and just listen? Please approach the podium, please.
I didn't sign up to speak, because I didn't think I was going to.
We're going to let you, ma'am.
Okay. Kathy Barley, twenty-five forty-one Hand Road, Midwest City. My daughter's in the process of buying some land directly across the street from me. So this means, because the surveyor hasn't done his job yet, that she's got to pay seven thousand dollars?
No, what that means, what we're talking about is if you have a big lot, and then all of a sudden you see an opportunity to increase the value of that lot, you split it and give one to your daughter, well, that's not going to qualify for the seven thousand dollar hookup fee.
Ma'am, let me ask you, does your daughter, your daughter is buying a piece of property from you?
No, across the street from me.
Across the street, but the lot, but the lot already exists? The piece of property already exists?
There's one address for five acres, and she's going to buy half of it.
Okay, well then that lot probably doesn't exist, exist yet.
Right, it doesn't, no.
Okay, okay. And so that would, that would be subject to the, to that, yes.
Okay.
So it's going to cost her some more?
All right.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Hansel. I live at 11701 Rohan Road. I'm at the intersection of Rohan and Hand. And thank you for allowing me to talk. I have a little bit of an unusual position on this. I want to say clearly, I'm not interested in the city water, but I am very interested in the fire hydrants coming in. And I wanted to say that I'd be willing to commit financially to support that effort to get fire hydrants in our, in our neighborhood, but like I said, I'm not, I don't want to get the city water.
And you won't be, you won't be, excuse me, you won't be, I mean, if the city water goes in, you won't be required to connect to the city water?
Right, right.
It'll be purely your, it's your decision.
Sure, sure, and I do understand that. I just wanted to make clear to you that I'm willing to financially support this endeavor for the fire hydrants. That was the...
I think the fire hydrants would naturally come with the water.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my only comment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Guy, just to be clear on that, you mentioned, so if they pay the seventy-five, they're still not, or are they going to be bound to tie on if they pay the seventy-five? Not to complicate it, but...
I guess I hadn't really, I had assumed that if somebody put seventy-five dollars down, that they would, would want to tie on to the, to the city water.
That's kind of a commitment, I think.
I mean...
It's just a matter of time before they'll want to tie on.
That's true.
So if they commit the seventy-five, and there's a record of it, then...
I mean, we can make it non-refundable seventy-five dollars, and then that way, that if they, if they pay, if they put it down, they're not getting it back.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion.
So if we cap the, they cap the seventy-five thousand today, the seven thousand five hundred, what?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand today, if we cap it, is that, how about the ones that pay seventy-five later? What is that? It's the seventy-five dollars?
It'll be, that seventy-five dollars buys you your spot.
Even though we are capping it today, that...
We're saying that after, after, what, after a certain date, we're going to give everyone sixty or ninety days.
We're not saying today.
Not today, no.
Okay.
That, that's correct.
On the seven thousand, it is capped today.
Okay. So who were they including?
As the lots exist today.
The owners, the residents that are owners as of now, that's where the seven thousand would be available for them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, the next year, if CPI goes up one point two percent, then it will be seven thousand plus one point two percent.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Mayor. So, subject to funding availability, I'm going to move to approve, to fund the construction of a waterline extension from Westminster Road to Southeast 28th Street along Rohan Road and Hand Road in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, six hundred, excuse me, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, seventy-five cents, subject to the following prerequisites, that in order to participate in attaching to that waterline, as of today's date, March twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, it must be a legally created lot. The owner of the lot, and each legally created lot, must pay a non-refundable seventy-five dollar fee within ninety days of today's date, March twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen. That allows the owner of that legally created lot attachment rights. Otherwise, there will be an attachment fee of seven thousand dollars adjusted to the U-CPI, officially the Urban Consumer Price Index, applicable at the time of the requested attachment.
Can we make one small modification? If only forty-five or forty-nine percent of the people sign up, they get their seventy-five dollars back. There's no reason that if these people in good faith pay their seventy-five dollars, and the fifty percent of the homeowners don't sign up, that at the end of the sixty or not, whatever days, I just, that they would be stuck not getting their money back.
Okay, I did include the fifty percent provision in that.
One other question, I'm a little confused on, the seventy-five dollars is payable right now rather than ninety days out?
No, sir, within ninety days of today's date. The seventy-five dollars is payable within ninety days of today's date. Otherwise, there's the attachment fee of seven thousand dollars, or to be adjusted to the, or by the U-CPI, the Urban Consumer Price Index, applicable at the time that that attachment's requested. So if it's not requested until twenty-twenty, whatever the Consumer Price Index adjustment is, is the rate that they would be paying. So if it's not requested until twenty-twenty, whatever the Consumer Price Index, uh, adjustment is, is the rate that they would be paying at that time.
I would...
But I did not specify the fifty percent threshold of, um, we will only undertake this project if we get participation by fifty percent of the residents in that area.
Can we add that?
We can.
Okay.
One other thing I'd like to kinda make clear. You said homeowners, but you're really, say there's thirty lots. And if homeowner A pays seventy-five dollars, that qualifies that lot. Say homeowner A decides to sell the lot a year down the road, he's, that lot is qualified for that, correct? Or is it only for that owner of that lot A?
I wouldn't see why not.
Okay, repeat that question again.
It goes with the lot, not the owner.
Goes with the property.
The seventy-five that qualifies that lot to be tied on for seven thousand, it goes with the lot, not the owner.
So long as there's a house on it.
Well, it's going through the lot.
I think the question is, if you then later divide the lot to where you need separate service for the subdivided portion, is that covered by the original?
No, it's, you're creating a new lot. It's, it's...
It's only on existing lots. If you split it, if you split your five acres into three lots, you kept your seventy-five dollar hookup fee, you hooked up, the other two are gonna pay seven plus CPI to hook up.
But I think it's your intent, though, for the, this, if a person pays for the, for the lot, it qualifies that lot, not necessarily...
I would have to agree.
As is.
How are we gonna define the residents in the area, this fifty percent threshold that you want?
There's thirty-something homes.
Yeah, we, we have a pretty good hold on that, of, of, an, an idea of how many lots. We do have an idea of how many lots there are.
Okay, but I mean, for purposes of the motion, how do you wanna describe it?
How many, how many lots, homeowners are there in that area, Billy?
Thirty-one. There's, there, there are thirty-one lots.
Okay, so thirty-one times fifty, just say sixteen, right?
Well, and to answer her question, the, the, the lots count also. So there's thirty-one, there's thirty-one available lots, either with existing houses or lots. There's thirty-one sites, right?
You said, you said thirty-one plus two?
No, there's thirty-one lots, there's thirty-one lots, there's two that have, that just up to the tree.
Okay, but they still, because they're...
There, there's still a property owner to it and they still got a, a letter, um, and I, and I would ask to clarify that, that, uh, um, only the people that pay the seventy-five dollars within the ninety days don't have to pay the seven thousand at a later date. Doesn't mean that everybody owns, that owns a lot gets a free tie on after that. Those people that commit, and this is what we communicated at the meeting, those people that commit to get the line put in are the ones that get the break and not have to pay the impact fee at a later date. So you have... Yep.
Yes.
This might be the most technical motion ever made by the council.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna tender the motion anew. I move to approve the request to fund the construction of a water line extension from Westminster Road to Southeast Twenty-Eighth Street along Roefan Road and Hand Road in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, subject to availability of funds. Also, subject to a prerequisite or prerequisites of at least fifty percent participation by residents of the thirty-one lots in the area that are legally created lots as of today's date, March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. Those individuals currently holding legally created lots can pay the seventy-five dollar non-refundable fee within ninety days of today's date, March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, to be permitted attachment to said water line. Those who fail to pay the fee, who hold legally created lots within ninety days of March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, will only be allowed to attach onto the line, subject to a fee of seven thousand dollars, which will be adjusted by the Urban Consumer Price Index, applicable at the time that attachment is requested.
I do have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. The motion carries. That's the quickest aye I've ever heard, so. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, good work, Ms. Eads.
Next item.
This is discussion and consideration of the R.L. Shears Company Landscape Architects Mid-America Park Expansion Master Plan. Mr. Sullivan, we don't need any extended, long, um, recommendations or motions, okay?
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Do you want the slide show?
Uh, no, let's just, first of all, Mayor and Council, um, Ms. Eads, you might ought to think about practicing law the way you wrote that, that motion. You, you get to hear a lot of difficult things in, on this horseshoe, but this is one of the cool and fun things that you get to, that you get to do as a councilperson. My apologies for not having the master plan presentation in your packet. That is one hundred percent my fault. I'd also like to tell you that this process that we went through was a culmination of a lot of staff effort to get to where we were. Uh, a number of Billy's folks, our grants manager, Julie, Shannon, and, and Terry Craft, and, and Billy, and all his staff worked very diligently to put before you what you see today and, and, and R.L. Shears, uh, for putting together a very nice product. The park board did unanimously recommend last Tuesday night that you, uh, adopt this master plan. Uh, and, uh, this is a beautiful piece of property. This is a wonderful opportunity. Obviously, it is a tool that we will use, uh, to go forward as funding becomes available, to develop this piece of property. Uh, but if you have any questions about the presentation, Billy or I one can probably answer most of those in Julie's absence, but... It is an eighteen-hole golf course. It is conceptual. What you'll see before you is conceptual. Uh, we did have a number of, of, uh, don't, don't call it frisbee golf. That is, that's fingers on, fingernails on chalkboard to these folks. The, we did have a number of disc golf enthusiasts, uh, that have been very engaged in this process and are very excited about the opportunity to develop a, a championship eighteen-hole disc golf course on this property.
It's pretty cool stuff.
It will be the only championship disc golf course in the metro. That is our intent, sir.
Disc golf is, bear with me, though, it's, what we're starting, they're having that at, uh, Conrad, is that right?
No, no.
Is, is that not disc golf?
We do have a nine-hole disc golf course in Kewanas Park, right here on Midwest Boulevard.
Okay.
And there are some improvements coming very soon to that and some tournaments that'll be going on there this spring and summer as well, so.
The foot, the foot golf.
Are you referring to foot golf at Hidden Creek? Is that where you, you play soccer and kick the ball into the hole?
So, an eighteen-hole foot golf, an eighteen-hole championship disc, and I didn't call it frisbee, thank you. That will bring people from far and wide.
It certainly will. That would be one of the, one of the intents of the designer, uh, was to bring some programming to this park that will, uh, uh, make it more, you, bring folks in, use it more, and hopefully that will, uh, make the park more popular.
So, how many acres again is that?
Gosh, Billy, can you help me? Um, hold on, I can tell you that. It is a total. Do you know the number off the top of your head?
Uh, was it eighty-six or something like that?
Julie.
It, it just grew because, uh, it, it goes all the...
Julie, what is the amount of acres of the park?
I got it, right here. It was originally sixteen point one eight. The original park was sixteen point one eight. There were thirty-one point three eight acres donated. Help me with the math here. That's roughly...
Forty-seven.
Forty-nine?
Yeah, Julie, actually, Julie's here.
I didn't know you were here, Julie. I'm sorry. You come up here? So, we over-doubled by the donation of this property.
And, and it goes, it ties into the Skip Recreational Trail, which also ties into the, the trail that's gonna go north of Twenty-third Street that we just acquired from the county a couple of meetings ago.
The trail is under, is designed and will be going to bid soon, uh, that will connect this trail to the rest of our, this park to the rest of our trail system. That will actually be the first...
First piece.
Piece of anything that's developed in the park will be, uh, an, a, a connecting trail that connect to the rest of our trail systems. It's a beautiful, beautiful park, as Ms. Allen will, will point out. Beautiful piece of property. Over the years, it did get a bad rap.
It's amazing.
Uh, and, uh, some access to the park was, was closed down as a result. Uh, but we believe this addition and creating some access off of Midwest Boulevard and some other, uh, key streets like Penny and, um, Bella Vista and Campbell will create some access into some areas within this park that, that'll have some really neat features.
Now, we had a meeting, the meeting was last week, last...
Two weeks ago.
Last week, I think.
Last Wednesday. Well, there was, um, master plan and such.
And that was very well received by those in attendance, so. We would, staff would highly recommend that you, uh, adopt this master plan that's before you.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, but what? I apologize. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have to express this concern.
Sure.
Vaughn, um, and again, I, recognizing it is subject to funding, but subject to funding in association with issues that we have in currently existing parks, because we do have some needs in some other existing parks that have been brought up and issues i- in addition to wanting to develop here at Mid-America and wanting to develop in the original mile, the original mile parks. So, how are we prioritizing what we're going to funding with these?
I wanna say that this money has already been set aside and available. This, our money has already been set aside for this project.
I'll let Mr. Henson answer that question. I'm not sure about that, but...
Well, I, I think that, that what, what Ms. Allen is, is referring to probably has to do with the trail. And, and, um, we had to re-priori, re-prioritize some money for the trail. And we will be putting that money in this coming year's budget for the, back into the, into the budget.
It was already set aside.
But, but not the entire project?
Not the entire project, no. But there was money set aside.
Not the entire, yeah, correct. And, I mean, I think that we have, um, um, Mayor, I, I know you're gonna, uh, I, I think we have a potential opportunity to, to help, uh, help solve some of these funding issues with the geo-bond issue. And, 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 um, so I'm gonna be suggesting that, that the geo-bond committee give some consideration to trying to put some money into the geo-bond issue to help begin the development of these two parks, that, the, the, what, what is the Town Center Park and this park as well.
Well, my understanding is that the money was there and we did, uh, allocate some money over to a project into, a project, what is that, in Ward, um...
It, it was for the trail.
For the trail over in, uh, Ward Two, I believe, correct? There was some money?
Uh, well, it was the Rails to Trail project.
Okay, right. There was some money allocated from that particular project into that.
Billy, could you give the council maybe an idea of, did you and Mr. Shears have, or Julie, have a conversation about if, if it were, if this park were fully developed, um, as it appears currently on paper, approximately what the engineer's estimates would be to fully develop it?
Um, we do have some of those numbers and I don't remember exactly where, what they were, but they, they were in the, I don't know, was it three and a half million dollars or something like that? What, um, what may be causing some of the confusion was that I, at some of the meetings, I said, one of the things I liked about the design of this park was that, let's take the, the, the disc golf, for example, um, that the way it's designed and that the special interest is that there is out there for the disc golf, that it would be easy for staff or citizens, like the disc golf folks, to, uh, find funding for that, the same way that it would be, uh, easy to, not easy, because it's never easy. It would be, uh, um, uh, easier to find funding for the all-inclusive park. There were a lot of people very excited about the all-inclusive park, not just to have a park for infants or a park for little kids, but that, that was, that would cater to, and a special place for people with, 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 uh, uh, the handicaps or disabilities, um, and even to be able to, to do frisbee golf on, uh, I think we call it the putt-putt course. Um, and so that, that, that staff could go target funding for that and that might be easier to get than trying to go out and secure three and a half million dollars, just like the staff targeted the, the Skip, the, the recreational trail, um, were able to go out and find funding for the mountain bike trail on, on that, that there was, the, the way this plan is broke down, um, that the fu, that funding could be, could be secured, uh, easier than just, than, than just, uh, maybe you...
Well, I think we're, uh, probably getting down in the weeds a little bit too deep. First thing is we need to either adopt or reject this proposal.
Yes, sir. That's all we're asking tonight.
Right, but, but again, but my, I'm sorry, but again, my vote to adopt or reject is based upon, subject to funding, adopting to accept and move forward with the plan.
Can I say something about funding, though? If you have an adopted master plan, you can find funding, you can find grants because you have a plan and you get points for that. If you don't have a master plan, it's identified and adopted by your governing body. It's harder to get grant monies. So, you know, if we have a plan that's adopted, we can start trying to locate funds for the items that are in the plan and implement the plan.
And, and again, Julie, I apologize. I mean, I, again, I, I know that this is a great plan. I went to the first planning meeting for it. I understand, I understand the draw for it. The problem that I have is that I have constituents, and this has been a discussion point with a number of you, including you, Vaughn, that complain to me regularly, that the parks that we have now are not being dealt with or not being addressed to their satisfaction. There are concerns about them. There are safety concerns about them, just like what's being raised about Mid-America Park, which is why we're trying to put this investment into Mid-America Park. Uh, you know, my concern is that I have to raise is, okay, subject to funding, you know, not just going out and getting grants to address this new shiny dime that we've got. And I appreciate the fact the Atkinson's donated us this additional acreage and we have a great opportunity here, I do. But I still have to show concern. If we cannot maintain, and I hear this over and over again from constituents, if we can't maintain what we have, the current parks that we have, then why are we investing in more and spreading ourselves thinner on this? And so this is where my concern goes. It goes to the issue of, when we talk about subject to funding, and I'm not aware that there's any funds set aside, so that's a, a newsflash for me, but if not all the funds are, are there for this park, we're gonna have to come up with them. I understand we have an opportunity with the geo-bond, I do. But just, you know, while we're moving to whether we're gonna adopt that or not, those are the concerns that I, you know, I feel obligated to have to raise. And before you step to address it, Vaughn, I just wanna say, again, I fully recognize you've raised issues too about the, the staffing that you have, um, and the, and the needs, and you have worked to meet the needs of one particular constituent. I have with these complaints about local parks. There are some others that we haven't even gotten to yet. Um, and so the, those are, those are the concerns I just want to address because it affects whether I'm gonna vote to, to accept this and want to move forward with it, subject to funding or not, in all honesty.
Ms. Eads, let me point out that we are the governing body and we set the priorities. And obviously, if we've got issues in other parks that we need to prioritize, then we have to rely on Mr. Sullivan and his staff to bring those to us. And then we fund them accordingly and not step off the cliff and start funding something else before we have the existing parks and issues taken care of. We're the, we're the whole, horseholder on that. So, we, we control the boat. So, we, we control the boat. Uh, again, we would have to rely on Mr. Sullivan and his staff to bring those priorities to us and fund those accordingly.
But with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I control my vote tonight and that's, this is my concern that I wanna have addressed in terms of what's the plan for this before I cast my vote tonight. I, I get that, you know, we're supposed to be in control of these issues, but, but it's a problem that, that we're, we're still dealing with.
But that is a property, that is- I know Susan well enough that I'm su-, I, I'm just gonna reiterate. She's not, and like, if I'm putting words in your mouth, let me know. She's in no way, shape or form denigrating your department. She's denigrating the lack of funds. She's not saying you guys are falling down on your job because of lack of effort, I don't believe.
Right, and, and so, just before we go search-
Well, just as you mentioned about your constituents, well as mine in my ward, at the, this particular park that has been, it exists, it has some existing property, so it needs to be, uh, it needs to be developed. It needs to be a park as it is. Uh, the money has already, we have a master plan and she's already indicated there is funds and grants for a park such as this to go forth. Uh, the plan, the parks that we have now, they are, my understanding and from what I've seen at a lot of parks, they are well-maintained. I feel that there always updated equipment to any park. A park is not, constantly has development. Same way with this park. It hasn't had, no development. And I do believe that this park should be, should go forth, being developed and maintained to be the park that it can be and be sufficient for Midwest City. It's an access to Midwest City. And I understand you say, well, you think it's great that Atkinson has given this property, yes. But why would you, someone give you something, you not do something with they have given you and make something out of it? That could be an access to Midwest City in general.
Well, they didn't give it to us with, with a specific dedication to put a forty-four billion dollar park on it.
Pardon me?
They did not give it to us with a, with a specific requirement that we plunked a forty-four million dollar-
There are stages that you do at parks, it's stages. You don't do anything all at one point in time. Now, there is a, there is a phase that they are looking at, they have a master plan. It's a phase, it's not just one thing done at one particular time. The trail is set to go in and I think it need to go, it needs to go forth.
And again, we're not dedicating any funding to this, we're just adopting another plan. And, and, uh, so with that being said, is there any further discussion?
Yvonne, how much are you asking for basically to, to, for tonight?
Zero. This, this is bought and paid for. This study is already bought and paid for through a, through a hospital grant that was written by our grants management and-
So, there's no funding issues tonight? This is, it was an academic discussion?
This is a planning tool.
That's kind of no brainer.
Nobody's taking money or giving money to anybody. I make a motion to pass.
Right, this essentially, I believe essentially, and Julie, you're, you're smarter than this than me, is by us adopting this, this gives you the ability to go out and possibly find something to do with it. So, in other words, we're not, we're not saying, well, I'm gonna give, you know, fifty million dollars to put that in, but we're just saying, if we adopt this, that gives Julie the opportunity because unless we adopt it, she, she doesn't even have the opportunity to go out and seek funds. So, I mean, that being said, I move we adopt this.
And, and let me just say, this is, this is no different than what the council did a couple of meetings ago when the, when there was a presentation on the original Square Mile Park. The plan was presented, the council approved the plan. Uh, that's all they did, was to approve the plan. And, and, uh, so, no financial commitment at this point and, and, uh, it's very similar to what you did before.
Right. So, the chair has a motion and I have a second, I believe. Any further discussion?
You get the motion, it's your last day.
We got that figured out?
Yep.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, Julie, you have two weeks to come up with all the money, so.
It is budget season.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we need, thank you, Yvonne, thank you, Julie. We move into the public discussion, new business of our agenda. Anyone having any concerns or issues to bring forth before the council?
Good evening, James Harpen, twelve fifty North Arideppo Drive, apartment one nineteen. I come for you not as a legionnaire at this point in time, this is something different. Uh, I'm a member of a model railroad club that used to have a home down in Plaza Mayor. As everybody knows, that place closed, we got kicked out. We have our model railroad in storage at this time and we are looking for a new home. And I'm hoping that someone here might be able to point me in a direction of someplace to look here in Midwest City, uh, for a possible. We are a five oh one C three organization. Uh, we hold, uh, classes for youth. We educate and promote the railroad safety and that. And like I say, we're, we're just looking for a new place to own. We, I will be honest and say that we were in the mall down there for fifteen-plus years at no cost. We were not charged anything. All we, all we did, all we did was minor maintenance on the storefronts. We maintained the floors, the lighting and stuff like that, and we'd be willing to do that again. So, I can be, I can be contacted through my Legion post or my personal phone number is four oh five eight two zero.
Don't, don't, don't put that out for everybody. This is recorded on TV, you don't wanna do that.
Sir, if you'll, if you'll step back and, uh, that gentleman that, uh, has got the big smile on his face, he, he will be helpful to you, okay?
Okay.
Uh, he's our economic development director and he knows a lot about what is available and, and, uh, and if he can get the, some basic information as to how much, you know, how much, how much building area that you need and so forth, maybe he could help you out, okay?
But he's gonna wanna play with the trains if he gets anything successfully built. He's a big hero.
Well, it all, all, all depends on what scale he's in. We're into N-scale, which is the little bitty stuff there, one one-sixtieth of the original size, but-
He's already shaking his head like he knows what you're talking about.
I've, I've checked a couple of other places and gotten no responses and I'm sitting here tonight figuring, well, you know, you people are smart, got your pulse on what's going on in Midwest City and, uh, you might just happen to know somebody that's willing to donate-
Especially if it was something like the North Pole or something like that, that didn't have anything going on the rest of the year, so. Anyhow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further business to bring before the council? Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
This is discussion and consideration of entering into executive session as allowed under twenty-five O S, section three oh seven V four, to discuss a pending claim.
Motion to go.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And ladies and gentlemen, we are now in executive session. We may or may not be back.
No, we will, we'll be back. We have one.
I may or may not be here.
We'll be back.